Okay, folks. And we're going to, oh, employee organizations. Can we hear from employee organizations?
She has no report.
Okay.
Just wanted to talk about parent-teacher conferences going on right now. Teachers really do a lot of work. I know I said that a couple of weeks ago, but they do a lot of work to get prepared for these. Although the spring conferences usually are not, we don't see them as quite as important or quite to have as curious much weight because usually if the student's doing well, we told that to the parents back in the fall and it's kind of like, you know, it's a repeat of what we tell them in the fall. And if it's a student with academic or behavior issues, we've already talked to them probably more than one time. So although we don't see these as quite as necessary, we still do a lot of work to get ready for them. During this time, also third to sixth grade students are doing their practice test for the, practice testing for the, it's not the S-BAC anymore, but the new computerized testing that will be going on in April and May. So we're already kind of starting on, it seems like we're already starting on the campus. So that's it.
Thank you. For the record, that's Carol Rodriguez, that's the TC. Do we have anyone from the substitute teachers? Okay. And we're here from our superintendent.
Okay. What you saw tonight were us honoring our students, where there's student voices and they participated in curriculum and, excuse me, curriculum instructions during symposium in Monterey. And we had, I think, I can't remember how many, but I believe seven or eight of our administrators that also were able to attend. A highlight for me was seeing John Hattie, who is a researcher on meta-analysis that looks at strategies that are most effective within schools and seeing him and having all of his books up in my office and having read them and led leadership meetings around Hattie's work. It was a great, great meeting. But it was also a wonderful event that was close enough to our district where administrators were also able to go and debrief around our learnings and really bring back, hopefully, that to their schools, but certainly to our district level. I also participated, actually hosted, actually. I hosted the superintendents of Salinas and Santa Rita. We meet with the city administrators about every six to eight weeks, depending on, you know, the holidays and everything that happens on that end. And I hosted that meeting here and we talk about issues that are, or concerns that are pertinent to the city at large and to all of our districts and how we might work together in a partnership to actually look at resolutions to some of the things that we're having. Many times it could be around safety issues that we're seeing with maybe some gang violence at the secondary levels and things that are happening around our city. In particular, I was able to bring to the table, and this is the second time I've actually brought it, to the city superintendent joint council, who is myself, the superintendent, Ramita's from Alisal, and Tim from the high school district, and the Santa Rita superintendent. I think she's come once or twice. But, and then we meet with the city administrators and we brought to them around asking the question, what are their short-term and long-term solutions to traffic around, for me, major thoroughfare. Schools that fall on major thoroughfares. Some of our schools do not necessarily fall on it. They still have traffic congestion problems. But specifically those that are falling on the major thoroughfare seem to me to be ones that we really need to address both at the school, at the district level, and at our cities. So I wanted to tell you we brought that to their attention and a meeting with some other folks, I think early next month, to continue that conversation. As you saw, we honored our spelling bee participants and these fourth and fifth grade students participated in the ICM spelling bee in, no, the Washington Middle School, right?
San Benito.
San Benito.
San Benito.
But in Washington. In Washington School District is what I meant. Okay, so that was a great exposure to spelling bee. I tell you, I've not been to a spelling bee since my son was runner-up in fourth grade and that was a long, long, long time ago. I'd not been to a spelling bee. So it was really quite a treat, which leads me to yesterday. We were also at a spelling bee for Monterey County Office of Ed and that was for our sixth graders and they'll be honored at our next meeting for their participation. We did not get a runner-up in that lineup, but they worked really hard. They were competing against them in eighth graders and it's just one large group, so that was fun. Let's see. At school visits, I've been to Sherwood to attend their awards assembly. They were giving out medals and trophies and certificates around their literacy awards and attendance awards. And then I also was able last week to go to Lincoln and to Roosevelt. I had asked principals to give me the schedule for when teachers who were piloting or implementing footsteps to brilliance were happening and I was trying to catch those in action. And it was, it was an interesting week because when I got to the school, all the schedules were no longer working because of what Carol said. We started our parent teacher conferences, so it was minimum days. We had a production that our students were attending Pinocchio and so some students' classrooms or grade levels were going to see Pinocchio. And at those particular schools, music was happening on that day. So I got to see a lot of different other things, but I also got to see some classrooms that were implementing footsteps to brilliance. And I don't want to burst your, burst my bubble, I guess. But today, Monica, maybe you can help me by telling us what the stats are from implementing that footsteps to brilliance. We started with 700 hours and we had a little bit over 2 million words. And where are we now?
At about 14 million words.
With 4,000 hours of usage on footsteps to brilliance. So that's to me, huge accomplishment. We will be doing soft launches in the next month and so we're getting the literature out. Again, footsteps to brilliance is a citywide initiative that we are offering an app to all Salina City residents to tap into this early literacy app. And we're really excited about that. So thank you, Lincoln teachers and Roosevelt teachers, for letting me go into your classroom. And since things were kind of quirky, I got to see math in action too. And this week, I'm on jury duty and it's a call-in, a call-in by day and I guess I missed my 5:00 call-in time, so I don't know if I'll be here tomorrow or not. But if I am, I'll be hitting schools this week and going into math classrooms. So that'll be exciting. And then last thing I wanted to share is that you had seen on these panels, goals that have been set by departments. Schools did the same thing. They set long-term and short-term goals around English Language Arts and mathematics. We have three basic goal areas that we focus on in our district. One is student achievement. The other one is school culture and climate. And the last one is parent involvement. And this year, I asked the principals to focus only on one of those goals, which was student achievement. And so they wrote goals around English Language Arts and math and they wrote how they were going to accomplish those goals. And I met with them one-on-one earlier, I think last month, and this, I don't remember the date, but a week and a half ago, they shared this out with their peers. And we had four small groups where they were reporting out their goals and how they were hoping to achieve the actual increase in student achievement that they had wanted for their sites. And I have to tell you, when I see administrators or teachers, actually, or students, and engage in a very high-level academic dialogue, it is so amazing. And that's what I saw happening in our midst and everybody being so excited about hearing another person's way of approaching their goal-setting and their activities that they were doing and how they might get there. And I, I really was energized by those type of activities. So that was a great activity for me to experience.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and lastly, this weekend, so on Friday evening, Saturday and Sunday, we went to, there's 14 of us who went to San Luis Obispo to participate in the ASUM Midstate Conference. And again, one of my gurus, who used to be my guru, Michael Pullen, was one of the keynote speakers there. And what was really exciting about this particular event was that because it was on the weekend, our principals and their vice principals could attend. And so we had a team of 14 of us who were able to go and I found it extremely valuable. The learnings were very, very, very high level. And so again, we've had a lot of professional development. I think we've been able to participate in the last three weeks.
Thank you very much. To my left, Mr. Hoffman.
Yes. I was very pleased to see in the paper that they're following our efforts at behavior modification. There were some interesting articles recently and I thought, well, they got most of it right. We're just.
Thanks. Mr. Garcia.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to bring up to the attention that El Gavilan Elementary School, on the 11th of this month, visited Harden Middle School. And again, I had a chance to talk to them as a group, at the same time meet the faculty from El Gavilan and also meet some of the counselors that are at Harden Middle School. For your information, so that the visibility is important as a board member and I was well-welcome, as you say, and at the same time, I got a chance, like I said, to talk to the students and they behave good, even though it was raining outside, they still went on tour. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ish.
Yeah, I, I had a busy last month. I was able to attend the program improvement and curriculum team meeting here in which the, some teachers from El Gavilan School presented on units of study. And that was not only exciting to watch in terms of learning about units of study, but even more so to look at the teachers that were involved in that team and see their enthusiasm and listen to the conversations that were happening. And it is very exciting, I think, for this district. As a former teacher, it made me long to be back in the classroom. And as a retired teacher now, that doesn't happen very often. So I loved that. And then I wanted to thank Jennifer Zansbach and Mission Park School Site Council, who allowed me to come and visit them and sit in on one of their meetings. I love school site councils because it's just like a board meeting for a district, but it's at the school level. And it helped me get a real good sense of Mission Park and their priorities. So that was a lot of fun. I also had the opportunity to go to Lincoln School. They had a read upon kickoff. I think the whole district is involved in the reading right now and that was fun to watch. They based theirs on Dr. Seuss, which I think a lot of people do, but they had a big presentation with Thing One, Thing Two, and the Cat and the Hat. And it was very energizing, very motivating, and I'm sure those kids, as well as kids throughout the district, are reading a lot right now. I was able to attend with Mrs. Martinez, the visit to Roosevelt School. And we were very fortunate. We went there to look at the Footsteps to Brilliance program. We were able to watch parents who were in the computer lab using the footsteps to brilliance themselves, I think not only to help their English, but also to learn a little bit more about what their children were involved with. But more so, as a surprise visit, the sixth grade teachers were having a grade-level collaboration, district collaboration day. And there were a group of teachers at Roosevelt visiting, looking at their ELD program. So we got to sit in on their debriefing and I learned about the very exciting things that are going on in ELD. And again, as a former classroom teacher, that wasn't my most exciting part of my day, but to see this, it makes me want to go back and teach ELD. Two things I want to thank CTA. They put on a welcome dinner to the new school board members and a thank you to board member Hoffman, who attended another meeting for me so that I could go to this dinner. I was, I was just overwhelmed with the support that CTA has, not only for their own teachers in terms of the union, but their staff development opportunities. And I thought this was really exciting because you get teachers from all kinds of districts coming together to collaborate. And, you know, you do that within your district, but to be able to have teachers from all over Monterey County have the opportunity to come together and collaborate, I thought was wonderful. So I thought kudos to CTA for sponsoring that. Also, their involvement with Common Core and pushing through Common Core, more staff development and their encouragement of Common Core was really nice to see. And then last of all, Monica Macias, thank you very much. The website's looking great. I, I, you know, again, when I get my board packet, I usually have to look up something and I went on and I just thought, oh, and I love, you know, I love seeing all what's going on, but I thought, I'm just going to click on those board policies and see if they're still there, I mean, to see if they're still under construction. Nope, they're up. So thank you very much.
And Lydia.
Lydia, thank you. That's wonderful. It was nice there. Anyway, thank you very much.
Wonderful. Okay. Do we have any replies to previous concerns or questions? Nobody addressing anything like that? So then we're on to our favorite part. Individuals desire to address the board on any issue that's not on the agenda. Mr. Gordon.
Thanks. Is this on? No. No. All right. Oh, you know what? I have to hand something over. Thank you. Sure. Perhaps if somebody can forward that to Mr. Estrada. So again, Frank Garden, parent of two kids in the district at Mission Park. I just have some follow-up on two issues discussed at the last board meeting. First, on dual immersion, we had a message come through from one of the viewers of our online videos on BBB. And Ms. Martinez, you had mentioned at the last meeting immediately following Mr. Gilliger's presentation, something called a dual immersion foundation. And you introduced some members of the audience. Now, someone in our online audience, she had a question about that. They wanted to know more about the foundation, specifically your board bylaws, the school board bylaws that you were referencing on the website. That doesn't make any mention of the foundation. We really can't find any official documents.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Can I interrupt right now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Or you want me to wait to the end?
No, go ahead. As long as I can have a couple extra seconds.
I'll wait to the end. I'm sorry, you're chugging.
Okay. So the question is, just to summarize, by what authority was the foundation created? In other words, is there a government document that sets forth the purpose of the foundation? Who does the foundation report to? Is it a subcommittee of the school board? And where finally may the public access the documents regarding how the foundation is structured? Second, there was a presentation by Ms. Macias on the current state of our district website. Afterward, Trustee Ish highlighted a lot of the functional problems. I'm glad to see that they've been addressed since the last board meeting. I also asked about Martin Sisneros, the contractor hired to create the website, whether he has any obligation to fix a lot of the glitches that are still present. I clicked around a few things and like, I tried to make a comment, for example, on the winner of the spelling bee and the website wouldn't let me accept a comment. So that's one glitch. There wasn't any response to my question whether he still has any obligation at this point. The invoices that I just handed out to you, I dug through my archives after that meeting and on the first page is the original proposal by Mr. Sisneros. The second page is the actual invoice that our school district paid to Mr. Sisneros. So on the copies I handed you, on the first line, it describes the type of service rendered. I highlighted it for you specifically. It says, "District Website Building Development Deployment Hosting Management 24/7 Website Hosting IT Support and Software Maintenance." If you look at the, well, it's originally bid at $5,000. On the second page, what we actually paid him for the exact same service is $11,636. So just to clarify, this $5,000 bid was in the board packet on the night of June 9, 2014, and the board voted to accept that proposal later on in the meeting. And then we see a contract signed by the superintendent the very next day on June 10 that brings in pay Sisneros $11,636. So we tried asking for clarification on this discrepancy back in October of 2014. The superintendent at that time, he basically said, "Oh, well, you're just wrong." So I have a YouTube link down at the bottom that you can view it yourself if you want to take a look at the comments and the response from the superintendent. We never really got a straight answer and we just thought since this issue came up at the last board meeting, that perhaps Ms. Martinez, you can investigate and finally bring some closure to this issue. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you for staying in your time. Let me just address the dual immersion foundation. I think I misspoke on that. It is the Salina City Elementary School District Foundation. There is a group, and I will get the information to you about the group, that is called the Dual Program Advocates. And so they advocate for the dual immersion program. And many of those members are within the, they're people that sit on the Salina City Elementary School Foundation group. So I can ask a little bit more about their role and how they exist and where does that fall in, kind of the same questions you're asking, but I didn't speak about the foundation itself.
Like how folks are elected and whether the schools are fairly represented.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Okay, I think I'd like to ask if anyone had any objections or wanted to pull any items in the consent agenda. If anyone in the public would like to pull anything in the consent agenda for separate discussion. From the board, anybody? Okay, with that, do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the consent items, all in favor?
Aye.
All closed. And 4-0, the motion passes. Information, Ms. Lori Sanders.
And friends. Good evening, superintendent and board members. I am here with Ms. Iza Werta, our principal and special assignment for capital program and program improvement, to present some information to you on our 2015 LCAB annual review. Part of the LCAB review process is to look at our actions and services, identify successes and challenges, and then look for suggestions on improvements, expanding things, deleting things, adding things. And of course, we are this year looking at data, some of which is included in this presentation. My other good friend in this endeavor, Virginia Garza Nunez, principal and special assignment for student information testing, is presenting tonight and I'll do my best to go through some of her more complicated parts. Okay? So as you, as I was saying, what we're doing tonight is just one of our three goals. We do have three goals. Ms. Martinez said earlier, one is student achievement. Our second goal is school culture and climate. And our third goal is parental involvement. We started with taking a very close look at the school culture and climate because we wanted to weigh some more data on student achievement with our second trimester testing that we did, so we'll have that to add also. So one of the things that we're looking at again is data. And I put here in five bullet points, some of the main really key points about what we're looking for in school culture and climate, what are the expected and normal measurable outcomes. One huge mandated area that we report on is student attendance. What we chose for our goal was that there would be a 1% increase in school attendance rates at sites whose rates are below 97% and that sites at 97% will maintain that rate or before increased. 97% is the statewide goal and we're working away at that one. Another goal in this area of school culture and climate is if sites will maintain or increase their ratings on the Williams facility report. As you know, each year, sites are visited for a Williams visitation, it's very thoroughly inspected. Also, we are looking for a 10% decrease in suspension and expulsion rates. To measure school connectedness and meaningful participation, there is this wonderful survey called the California Healthy Kids Survey, often referred to as CHICS. And we're looking for a 5% increase of students reporting a high level of connectedness and meaningful participation. The other measurable outcome that we wanted to look at was an increase in the number of sites providing students with the Playworks recreational program at recess and after-school programs to promote pro-social skills and inclusiveness in all recreational activities. So again, the main initiatives that we have in school culture and climate are such as attendance program, we have a attendance recovery of the Super Saturday School, our Positive Behavior Intervent and Supports Initiative, Restorative Justice in the schools, and their self-safety and well-maintaining schools. So in goal two, our first action was increasing school attendance. And as I repeated the statewide, as I said, the statewide goal is 97% and our goal is to increase 1% or maintain 97. I'm happy to report that at this point in the year, 12, 13 schools do have the 1% increase in attendance. One school has a .5. So we're hopeful that before the end of the year, that they will be able to also increase their attendance. One of our challenges that we have is locating staff for our Saturday School. And this is a program where students who are absent, whether it is an unexcused absence, they can attend and the district, they do have an academic day, it's also a day of enrichment that mirrors the regular school day. And then we are credited for their attendance and we recover the ADA. Some suggested changes that have come up so far are to establish district-wide incentive program, attendance incentive program. All school sites do various things to encourage students with certain rewards, whether it is popcorn parties or extra recesses or meeting calls, but we need to have some things district-wide. Another change that has been suggested is to have outreach staff for monitoring attendance and working with families to get to the root of some of the attendance problems. These, this is Virginia. I could never have done this, guys, I'll be very honest with you. And this is taking a look at the attendance reporting period. And you can see that the schools in yellow over there are participating in our Super Saturday School Attendance Recovery Program. And the purple is showing the ones that are maintaining or are hitting the 97 mark. And as you can see, the data changes with each month because it is a cumulative average of the ways, on this chart, you can see the increases that we're seeing so far. Again, the yellow are the schools with the with the Super Saturday School. And you can see the end-of-the-year average, and then what we have going so far, and then the difference. There is an error in, well, no, not an error. Veranda Academy has obviously no data from last year to show. So, we're very happy with this growth, and we just really need to keep it up. Okay. Now, I believe we have Ms. Huerta?
I believe me, Super Ten My Pines, this is the president Kim, board members, and the audience. Okay. So, increasing school connectedness district-wide, our goal is to increase 5% of students reporting high levels of school connectedness and meaningful participation measured by the California Healthy Kids Survey. Our students, our 46th grade students this year were able to participate on the CHICS. We gave it to them, our teachers gave it to them at the end of February 23. And our successes is that the 14, actually 13 out of the 14 schools participated because currently, right now, Veranda, Veranda Pia is not, you know, only a kinder or preschool or a second, or the first grade, or kindergarten, I should say. And so, we should have data for you coming soon. We just received it, we just received the data, actually, on Friday, so we're analyzing it. So, we should have that information to you in future presentations. Also, some of our successes right now is that we're also implementing PBIS and Restorative Justice, and also Obes Anti-Gullying Program. Currently, we have it at four school sites, Los Palmas, Sherwood School, and Sherwood School Roosevelt and Mama Vista. And we are planning to provide professional development for all staff to increase cultural proficiency. And also, one of the things that we want to do is also survey the parents on this California Healthy Kids Survey. And the survey should go out in April for the parents.
Did you want to talk about the chart?
Okay. Okay. So, we have some data here for, this is the schools that are participating in PBIS. And it tells you exactly which schools are implementing what tier of PBIS. So, we just have one school this year in Lorwood that just implemented PBIS. So, they are tier one, the rest of them are tier two. And we have three schools that are already in tier three, which are Mission Park and Divina Sherwood School and Veranda, well, actually, Veranda Pia will start next full year.
One of, Goal Two, Action Three, which is providing emotional behavioral supports to students outside of the classroom, addresses one of the required, or state mandated data points that we are to measure, and that is suspension and expulsion rates. And I have some information on that. So, our goal was to see with our various programs and then with some added support, attendance test to create some suspension and expulsion. We also want to see an increase in the number of sites providing students with Playworks, the program I described before. So, some successes is we've brought in some great resources for teachers, administrators, and families, and students. We have in the district now three behavior analysts that work with student study teams, classroom teachers, and families in devising behavior plans for how to address what we would call tier two and tier three behaviors. These are our students that are definitely needing some assistance. And we need assistance to help to best meet their needs. We also this year, through partnership with Monterey County Behavior Health, have five behavioral health therapists, and they provide direct services to the students. Each one of the five has a caseload of approximately 20 to 25 students that they provide counseling services to. So, this is a huge step forward for our district. We also have our Sticks and Stones program through Harmony Home that provides more tier one, tier two therapy or small group therapy at all of our sites, two days each week. A challenge is then, again, locating our Playworks recess supervisors. Staffing is difficult. And we suggested, a recommendation that we've had so far has been for some regular follow-up training for Playworks. This is our two-day suspension data. And this shows the 2014 out-of-school suspensions in the first column. And then next to it, it is the 2015, '16 suspension data, but it's only two days as of 2/25 when we created this report for the presentation. And of course, we're not comparing a full year to a full year. It's a full year to essentially two-thirds of the year. But you can see that we have some great successes. We're right, and we're definitely moving in the right direction to decrease. And for all last year, we had 705, excuse me, 707 suspensions either in-house or out of school. And two days, we're at 350. And that's roughly half. And we're two-thirds of the way. So, we're showing definitely more than a 10% decrease if this trend continues. So, we're hardened by that. That tells us that good things are happening for students in classrooms and on the playground with their behavior. Another thing I'm very happy to report too, and a lot of this credit will, all of the credit, goes to our maintenance department and our facility folks. And this is Maintain Self-Safety and Well-Maintained Schools. Our goal was a 10% of the sites would maintain or increase to an exemplary rating on the Williams report, with no site receiving less than a good rating. Really happy to report that 12 of our 13 schools have received an exemplary report. We have one school that received a rating of good. According to the, well, to get that, that means to receive a rating of good, 90% of the facility checks out as very well. To get exemplary, it's 99% of the facility is well-maintained. Kudos to our maintenance and facilities folks. Also, then finishing up, our last action, Goal Two, is support the foster youth.
Okay. So, the successes are that we're currently vice principals are monitoring the academic progress and social-emotional working of our foster youth. We have 34 students in foster youth throughout the school district. And they are providing academic interventions and support services such as counseling and anything else that they need for the students. Some of the challenges right now currently is that some sites need to develop like a check-in plan to meet weekly with their foster youth students because some sites have two students, some have three at the most. So, some of the suggested changes to develop like district-wide procedures for to check in one-to-one. And on April, Saturday, April 2, we're going to have a parent leadership conference. It's going to be held at Veranda Middle Elementary School. And the schedule, we're going to begin at 8:00 a.m. to all the way to 2:00 p.m. And the focus of this, oh, at this date will be the local control accountability plan. We're going to go over, we're going to highlight the actions and services that are currently being offered throughout the district. And we have a whole program. And, but the fun part also will be at the, after lunch, we're going to have stakeholder LCAP input, you know, from the community, from teachers, parents, and everybody's invited. And you have a flyer that's there that's currently at the school sites. And we're going to continue to recruit our parents and everything, hopefully, they can come on this day. So, save the date until, until 2.
Okay. So, there is, the LCAP is a very dense document. It's a complicated document. And the state is, as always, there's a new survey on how to make it more user-friendly. And so, what we've done with this presentation will be doing with a presentation of the next board meeting is try to pull out a, we discussed, mentioned all of our actions under Goal Two, but some of the highlights of the successes and the challenges, and where we are with the data. Are there any questions?
I actually have a question.
Sure.
It has to do with, on Goal Two, Action Two, increasing school connectedness. You said as part of your success that Playworks was implemented at all school sites. And yet, you say as a challenge that later on, that staffing that. When you say it's implemented, is it implemented with current staff right now? Or, like, how is it implemented?
Well, in a perfect world, we would have, every site would have a recess supervisor that begins work before the first recess and continues working through the primary, the upper grade, and then also through lunch. And then get some time for preparation. We only have seven sites that have that person in place. But we have it going on then at additional sites in our after-school best program. And we've also trained teachers so that they're providing, and they're teaching their students the games to play during, they're using their PE time to do that. And then we do have some sites that have been really, really creative. And they're using student supervisors to organize the games and get it going. They have procedures because they don't have that staff, that they have highlighted games of the week where it's announced over the loudspeaker in the morning, and then the kids are going out at recess, having the top game, by teachers during PE. And so, it is happening. But in a perfect world, we would have a three-and-a-half-hour recess supervisor in place at every site. And we did just close a posting window, and hopefully, we'll have more on board.
And again, at Mission Park School Site Council meeting, they were talking about how the implementation of the Playworks that, I think it was during lunchtime, had really cut down dramatically on the number of referrals to the office for inappropriate behavior at recess. And I thought, oh, my gosh, if that could happen at every site, that would be phenomenal. So, do you think at least at lunchtime it's happening? Or?
In various forms, but I don't think, unfortunately, we have, I know that we do not have a classified staff in place at all sites that's fully able to organize it.
The other piece of that puzzle is our vice principals. Our vice principals have taken an extremely active role around the implementation of Playworks. And I've seen many of them, just, this has become their passion. And one of the things you'll see at many of the schools, with the help of our maintenance department, they have actually created the zones at their schools. And so, as Laurie says, it's happening at different levels, depending on the staffing. But I'm looking kind of at the data report and highlighting the schools that I know have taken Playworks to the highest level, and it shows in their data. So, but I did want to remind you that assistant principals have had a tremendous role of making Playworks play out at the school sites. Amazing job.
Okay. Laurie's going to, Ms. Sanders is going to continue with our classified. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hi, Representative Sanders with CCA. I was just wondering, I think it's great that the parents are going to have this conference for, to give input. And I was wondering, is this the place where classifieds come to also give input at this conference? Or is there something else scheduled for?
For the LCAP?
Yes.
I can answer that, yes. We're going to invite all stakeholders to attend, and hopefully, it's on a voluntary, so it will be on a voluntary basis. But yes, everybody's, it's open to everybody, too. Everybody is from the city and us, you know, so are in the community. And a lot of classified will be helping us that day as well, you know, to babysit and all of that.
I think the question was, will there be another opportunity for the classified staff and probably certificated to give input to the LCAP? Is there another date scheduled?
A separate date? We will, we have it at our PICT meeting.
We will look for another opportunity for that to happen, okay?
I'm following along with what CCA was asking about. This is kind of a repeat of what happened before in the LCAP. Teachers were not, and classified were not given our own kind of time to give input. And the thing is that we were, at that time, invited to a meeting, it was called, and we were called Community. The community members were allowed. Well, as teachers, yes, we know this school is our community, but we kind of expect to be asked as teachers, as professionals, as people that work with the students one-on-one all the time. We expect to be given a chance to put our thoughts in. And to be just, oh, well, you, we're going to be invited with stakeholders. I mean, I worry that teachers are not going to understand that they're part of just stakeholders and not being afforded the respect I think that we should have. So, I do hope that there's another opportunity. Somehow or other, I don't think PICT is quite the place because PICT is not always, does, is, does not always have representatives from every site. So, you know, that's a problem. And also, if the PICT representatives don't know that they're coming to give information ahead of time, then they have no opportunity to talk with other members of, or other staff at their site. So, I do hope that classified and certificate will be given some other opportunity to have input.
So, I'd like to respond first. As I understand, and as she led the LCAP process at North Monterey County Unified School District with all of our stakeholder input, we developed a three-year plan. And this, each year, the plan is reviewed and looked upon of what changes and what's working, what's not working, you know, what might we add. So, it's not revising, it's not rewriting of the plan. It's actually looking at the process to see, are we on target, are we not? And if we aren't, then what do we need to do to change that? So, for me, input means that. Looking at what currently is in that three-year plan and what we might need to address, and how we might address that. And that said, I also think, I worked really hard at this, at least in my former districts, and I asked Ms. Huerta when she presented the LEA plan, that she showed the alignment between plans. We have a local educational agency plan that's driven by how we utilize our federal and our categorical funds. We have an LCFF model that then we write an LCAP plan for. Then you have your school plans. And your school plans basically look at the allocations from your supplemental concentration grant, which is part of that LCFF formula, and how those dollars are used at a site level. So, in, what I'm trying to do is to paint a picture.